I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting. It is Monday, January 10th, 2021. The time is 8:09 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin.
Here.
Johnson's ready?
Here.
Anne Hart. Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Pansika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Favre.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the Monday, December 6th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I move to approve the Monday, December 6th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions? Minutes. Okay. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready?
Yes.
Anne Hart. Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Pansika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Favre.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. So we will begin with the Facility Development Committee. Mr. Pansika.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Um, we start today with in-person presentation. So, um, but first we'll have an update from Cory on the stormwater project. So Cory?
This morning, the, we have three individuals from the, they either work for the Village of Wilmot or on behalf of the Village of Wilmot. They're going to update us on the Thornwood Park Stormwater Project. We have Bridget Berger, Lisa Brock, and Darren Olson, and they have a presentation for us. So take it away.
Bridget, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Several models.
I can't, I can hear you, I can't hear Bridget. Darren, can you hear them?
I can hear you, I can't hear Bridget.
Okay.
We could, we heard her earlier.
We did. It shows that she's not muted on, on the list of participants.
Right. It could be an individual issue. Also, we're noting online that people are having issues with Zoom across the country. There's a kind of a detector when people notice things not working. So it could be that as well. We are live streaming now as well.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll send her a text that we can't hear. She probably already knows.
Darren, are we able to hear your voice?
Oh, there she is on video. Bridget, we can't hear you. Can you hear us? Okay, we still can't hear you.
Darren, are you able to give us a signal, speak, so we can see if we can hear your voice? We can hear Lisa loud and clear.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can. Bridget, I think it might be an issue with your computer. Okay. We can wait a couple of minutes, it's okay. Alternatively, Frank, maybe we should go to item number two and we can circle back. I'm not sure Bridget has a, someone who might be able to assist her. Would you like us to move on and circle back, or?
I'd be willing to, uh, to fill in for Bridget's, uh, audio if, if that works too.
Absolutely up to you, Darren and Lisa.
How your schedules are, I mean, the next segment will probably take, you know, 10 minutes. So do you want to wait for that, or if you'd rather move on?
Maybe we can, we'll wait for the 10 minutes, and if they can't get it fixed within the 10 minutes, then I'm, I'm happy to give the presentation.
Great. All right. So the, the next item is the Summer 2022 Project Updates, and we'll have.
It may make sense to stop sharing the village screen while we hear updates from Joe. Thank you.
Okay.
Joe, it's great to have you in person.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's great to be here. Okay, um, I'll start with McKenzie. McKenzie, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting last week. Um, everything went well. We had great turnout. Uh, right now, the project's broken up into three bid packages. Um, looks like we're going to have a minimum of four or five bids submitted within each bid package. So that's great. Um, our last budget assessment we did was at 85% CDs. That was the middle of December. Uh, we were tracking just north of 2.2 million. So it's comparable, um, to the previous budget assessment, which was a 60% CDs stage. Um, right now, we anticipate one base bid, uh, as well as a few alternates. Alternate one will be related to the roofing work. So we'll identify that independent of the air conditioning work, um, as well as a couple of electrical alternates, one being the cloth wiring replacement. Uh, right now, our bid opening is tentatively scheduled for January 9th. So barring any significant changes throughout the bid phase, um, I anticipate the bid opening, uh, remaining on January 9th.
One, one clarification, I believe phase 10.
Um, let's see. I'm sorry, the 19th.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It was missing the one, Frank.
That's okay.
The 19th. Um, mechanical equipment for McKenzie, we did, uh, we did do a pre-purchase, um, sort of a commitment letter, um, to get the order, to get the equipment on order. Um, that'd be 23 unit events, uh, with the lead times that we're experiencing now. Um, this was definitely the right move. Uh, with regards to the chiller, um, I did get a call last week with an updated ship date. So keep in mind, these pre-purchases were locked in early December, allowing almost seven months for delivery. Um, I got a call yesterday or, or last week with regards to an updated ship date, and it's now October 22. So the good news is, um, there were a couple of specified manufacturers for the chiller unit for McKenzie. Um, so now we are discussing, um, alternate options with the second manufacturer. Right now, their lead time is 16 weeks. So we have, we have an acceptable backup, so that's what we're going to start expediting this week. Okay? Um, but overall, with McKenzie, um, we're working with ComEd. We have a new service that will be required with the new load that we have. Um, there could be some additional supporting costs for that new service, um, that right now, we're working with the design team to, to verify that. So any changes that might have to occur within the bid docs will do via an addendum in preparation of the bid opening later this month.
The, the new load is because of the air conditioning?
Correct, the new equipment. Any questions on McKenzie before I move over to Ramona? Yes.
So we have the ability to cancel the order that is now not coming until?
Correct, so we built in the day after the board meeting. So assuming, we'll see how the bids come in. If for whatever reason, the board decides not to move forward with the projects, we have the ability to cancel both orders.
I mean, so, so that's good to know. But I mean, the one that we, that is now not able to get here on time.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, when salespeople just give up orders, it's, it's, it's wild times. It's, it's, uh, you know, that's something that we're going to do on a weekly basis, just checking with vendors across all of our projects. What's the current ship date? Current ship date. Um, I'm sure there's going to be things, some things that surface that we're going to have to address. Um, we just don't know. Lots of unforeseen things that potentially could happen.
Thank you.
Okay, Ramona, um, we, right now, we are at the, uh, we just did a 75% CD budget assessment. Um, that was also, um, distributed on December 15th. Uh, we are tracking $2,142,500. So that's about within a percent and a half of the preliminary budget assessment that was done back in June of last year. Uh, we are rolling in some added scope since we will be at Ramona, um, just with regards to some additional casework at some of the classrooms, um, creating some additional storage via sliding marker board assemblies, things of that nature. So that wasn't part of the 75% CD assessment. Um, it is in the 95% CD assessment, which is out right now. So I distributed those documents last week, and I anticipate having our final control estimate issued maybe the end of this week, um, worst case, Monday next week. So that'll kind of set expectations for, for the bid opening for Ramona, which is, uh, scheduled for February 10th. So our out-to-bid with, for Ramona right now is January 20th. So we're, the team's working towards that bid issuance. Again, that's January 20th with a bid opening of February 10th. So similar to mechanical equipment, um, window system lead time. Um, we feel we're still okay. I know Frank, you had asked me that question maybe last month. Um, I, I think we're still okay, but as we just found out with the chiller, um, new information and not always positive information can come up at any time. So I think it's important that we, uh, we get the Ramona bids, um, approved shortly thereafter, the bid opening. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting, I think is what we're, our goal is.
Are we still looking at, on the windows, the rolling implementation, or trying to do it all in the summer?
Right now, we're anticipating summer. So overall, I think everything's going well. Harper obviously bid, uh, a couple of months ago. So right now, we're just focusing on submittals. That equipment with, that's been ordered for quite some time, so, um, Harper's going great.
I, I just had a, a question. Maybe it's obvious, but I really appreciate you guys staying on it. Now, it's maybe unprecedented times in your industry. So, um, what, what do we do if we don't get major machinery? Delay the project and wait? What happens typically?
The, the ship date and the, the install of the equipment's going to have to follow potentially, um, post-start of school. And, um, something we'll just have to coordinate finishing off. Obviously, air conditioning's affected, things like that. That's all going to come online, but, um, something that we're going to be discussing, what, what, what do these backup plans look like? What's the contingency? Um, my fear is just finding out everything's going to go great from now till May, and then all of a sudden, we get hit with the, oh, it's not coming till November, and there's nothing we can do about it. Um, so it's a great question. I mean, the last, uh, the last month and a half, I think all I've been doing is procuring equipment for many, many, many school districts. Um, there's a lot of work out there, mixed with the supply chain issues. So that combination is, um, yeah, we've never seen anything like it.
Yes. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Bridget, thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks, Peter.
So something like the chiller, I mean, if you could, you could finish the mati roof parts, then the chiller would be a more contained type of implementation?
Certainly, yeah. There will be, obviously, the, the setting of the equipment, the hookup of the equipment, and then there's, um, temperature controls, things of that nature, that will generate some time, but, uh, but 99% of the project can still be completed.
And, and safety-wise, for, for kids, it's contained?
Correct.
Hi, thank you.
Yeah, I, I had one other thought. So, um, I mean, we're kind of used to the one-at-a-time projects, which we really are, you know, grateful for. But I was thinking, if, if something does go wrong in May, you know, doesn't it make sense to think about another project potentially that, um, would not require equipment, or something that'd be easier to do, um, so as not to waste the summer? That's fun.
Yeah.
We, I'll say we can look at it. I think the amount of lead time that's necessary at this point for projects, I, I'm thinking it might be difficult to queue up another project just in case, but we'll take a look at it and see if there's some alternative, much smaller projects that may be able to be on the docket.
Yeah, for the summer, it's, it's getting pretty late.
Yeah.
And it's not just in mechanical equipment. Many other products are, we're experiencing similar, um, maybe, maybe not quite to the extreme of, of the mechanical equipment, but certainly, um, we're going to be doing our check and balance on that weekly basis for all the products.
And there's a lot of other, like, background work, you know, like roofing, some materials are probably a little easier to get, so. Well, we'll just have to stay up to date and recognize that there are conditions outside our control.
Anyone's doing a home project, appliances, I, I think half of every home product, it's months of waiting. A new table could take 11 months. It's amazing. So we'll do our due diligence, eliminate surprises, so we can plan.
Yeah, I, I think that's the biggest thing. You know, the sooner we know that there's going to be a unavoidable issue, the more time you have to adjust. So, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Joe. Nope.
Just to add on, a, a couple of comments to, to Joe's update for the summer. Um, I do want to highlight that, as Joe mentioned, the, the way the, the timing of the finalization of the Ramona design specs, um, we really find ourselves in a position where the plan is to open, um, a little under a week before that February Committee of the Whole, which then means we would, if we waited until our traditional regular board meeting, we would be waiting about two and a half weeks, talking with Joe about what makes the most sense. Um, we were planning to seek board approval at the February Committee of the Whole. Typically, we don't take action, um, kind of as a, as an additional measure to, to let the community know that we were going to go down such a path. We plan to make an announcement later this month at the board meeting to let, some people may watch committees, some people may watch the regular board, let them know that we do plan to take action at a meeting that we typically do not. Um, so that was one thing I wanted to point out. The other is, with these projects and the age of our buildings, um, the lovely asbestos discussion gets brought into it. So at Harper, we have a significant amount of work in the asbestos front to take care of. Um, we are going to tackle as much of that as possible over spring break, recognizing that there are limitations to what can be done just from, uh, like a safety standpoint and creating, uh, safe containment areas. And then still being able to, uh, have the building open back up Monday after spring break. And then there will be a few weeks of work for asbestos in, in June. The reason I point this out is, um, the scope of the work is going to be large enough that it will require a formalized bid that is approved by the board. Our plan is to bid that out in February and have, uh, some, some results that we can bring back for board approval at the February 28th board meeting. Um, we do anticipate that there will be some, uh, smaller abatement work done at McKenzie, but the, the amount of that i- is quite a bit smaller and is more typical of what we see. We're just doing a small amount in a given summer. And then, um, we are also in the process of, of testing and finding out whether there might be any asbestos abatement impacts related to the Ramona project. So, um, those are just a couple of other updates I wanted to share with the board related to our summer projects.
Two, uh, quick follow-ups on that. One, the asbestos, um, that's more than anticipated work, or just it was an open-ended item? Cause it's, until you open up walls and stuff, you don't really know.
The, the, the abatement work at Harper is, we were, we were aware of it and, um, knew that there was a significant amount. I think maybe the part for me that was maybe a little surprising is the length of time that it will take to get it out. One of the challenges is that it's a lot of, um, the asbestos is wrapped around the piping at Harper. It is in a crawl space. It's, so the workers are literally crawling in there. It's not easy to move. It's not easy to get about. Um, you know, it's not like you can throw a lot of people because it's such a tight space. You know, one of the things, when I knew that we were going to pursue this project last summer, one of the things that we had considered was, knowing the scope of the abatement work, do we try to do some of it over winter break? Well, the one problem is, is that the boiling, the piping for the boilers run under the floor. And if we had pulled off that, it's, that asbestos insulation, um, the floors would be piping hot all winter long, and we would be getting complaints every day from every room. So that, you know, didn't quite work. We thought about it, but, um, so this is kind of the best path forward, but it is a, a good amount of, um, abatement work.
So is that, would that cost in the bid, or is this above the bid? Okay, that's.
This is above and beyond.
Yeah, that was back to how much above what we anticipated.
Oh, so I've been, of like, stuff that I've planned for, this is, the, the Harper work is probably going to be over, a little over 100,000. But it's something that I've been aware of and had planned for, for these projects.
And then that, it's a logistic thing for, for Dr. Conklin and Amy, but is it appropriate to have like a special board meeting to have that vote? Or can we have a vote in the Committee of the Whole Meeting as long as it's announced?
As long as the Committee of the Whole Meeting is announced as a special meeting, we can take a vote there.
Okay. I'm sure you'll figure it out with the right logistical.
Yep, we're on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, for Joe? All right, thank you. It was great to see you guys in person. Hopefully, this will be a pattern now.
Great to see you. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right. Sounds like we have a, uh, technical fix. So if that's true, why don't we go back to the, uh, presentation by the village?
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. Um, so thank you so much for your time today. Thank you for accommodating Zoom and the technical difficulty. Um, I have such a great appreciation for IT folks. So Tony, that includes you. Um, there are some new faces in the crowd today, some new board members. So, um, I'll take a little bit of time with, going over why we're building this project, but really, the purpose today is to talk about Phase 3 at Thornwood Park and the impacts to the school. Um, before we start, I also want to thank the school district, the board, and the staff. We've had several projects where our capital construction has overlapped with school, um, school zones, and we've developed a really close working relationship the last several years, most recently with the Central Avenue project. So we are confident that we can continue that moving forward, but we do appreciate all your accommodations. Go ahead, Darren. So the village board has been talking about stormwater for well over a decade, and most recently, I'd say the last four or five years, we have, have dedicated our time on building neighborhood storage. Um, this is a three-phase project, and the good news is we're two-thirds complete. Phase 1 at Community Playfield was completed in 2020. And again, a shout out to the school board. We quite honestly could not have built Phase 1 without, um, your help and partnership on this project. Um, we utilized High Crest Parking Lot as our primary ingress and egress to the park, and it was a lifesaver as far as being able to build that project. Phase 2 at Hibbard Park was completed this past year, and 2022 is dedicated to Phase 3 at Thornwood Park. Just to put in perspective how big this project is, it's about a $65 million project, and when it's completed, we'll have built 14 million gallons of underground stormwater storage and over five miles of brand-new storm sewer, much of which is, is very large diameter. There will be detailed maps further in the presentation, but just a high-level perspective on the work that's happening this year. The areas shaded in blue are what will be under construction. So the majority of the work is up in the Kennelworth Gardens subdivision in the upper right-hand corner of the map. You can see the square is Thornwood Park itself, and a lot of the streets surrounding the school are impacted with new construction. South of Lake Avenue, we have new storm sewer on Hunter and on Schiller, and there's a little bit of work, uh, along the Skokie Boulevard corridor as well. When we started this endeavor, we took a step back and realized that the, probably the most, the number-one priority when building Phase 3 is how do we build a massive construction project in a safety-sensitive environment like Harper School? And our goal was to maximize the construction activity during the summer months when school was not in session. There is no way we could build, unfortunately, a $20 million project in three months. So we know there's going to be some carryover, some overlap, both before school and after school. So our next goal was, how do we build a project and keep it safe for the kids trying to get to school, and the parents as well? So these are just a few of the bullet points on the safety mechanisms that are built into the contract. There are others, um, but primarily, we are limiting, limiting truck traffic on Thornwood and Dartmouth during times when schools is, um, during the pickup and drop-off periods. So there's penalties in the contract for heavy construction equipment driving through that intersection, uh, during school pickup and drop-off times. We also have, um, knowledge of the crossing areas that, either on the school walking route map or that have a lot of school activity. Um, we will have flaggers and build temporary access crossings to make sure that those crossings are safe and the corridors that lead kids to school are safe. So all those mechanisms are built into the contract, as well as incentives and penalties to make sure the contractor stays on, on schedule as much as possible. I'm happy to say the contractor, who is the low bidder, and the village board will be awarding the contract tomorrow night, is Burger Excavating. They were the same contractor who built Phase 1 at Community Playfield. So they're very familiar with the village, and they did an excellent job, uh, making sure our stakeholders, the school, the park district, and that our residents were well-informed of what was going on. So, look, going back to safety, we started with the school walking route map and overlaid our project on top of that map. And the schedule basically starts in March and will run all the way through the end of November. I'll, I'll just walk you through these pieces. They're color-coded on the map. So first out of the gates, between March and May, we will be building the section in pink, which is on Beechwood, between 21st and Hunter, as well as a little tail on 21st, and a bit of work at the intersection of Hunter and Beechwood. So that's March through May. Then we drop down to Stage 2, which is in purple, that's south of Lake Avenue. We will build Hunter Road between Lake and Schiller, and a storm sewer on Schiller between Lake and Pinecrest. Now, this work will begin in May and end in August. We will keep the east side of Hunter Road open at all times for schoolchildren. And again, we will make sure if there's any overlap, any crossings where, where kids interact with construction, we will provide flaggers and keep those crossings safe. Stage 3 in yellow is the majority of the work up at Thornwood Park. This is where the stormwater vault will be constructed, kitty-cornered to the school. I'm happy to say the majority of this work will be when school is out. So June, July, August will be the heavy construction months to build the vault. Uh, we, we do know, though, that there's good likelihood, if, if there's bad weather, any unknown field conditions, anything that could put a wrinkle in that schedule, uh, there could be a little bit of overlap with, with truck traffic the tail end of August into September. Uh, September and October are primarily restoration months. And then in Stage 4, which is blue, we will also, this is also, I'm going to start in summer, we'll be working on Hunter Road to build a large diameter storm sewer, as well as Greenwood. Um, the majority of this work will be done in the summer months when school is out. And finally, Stage 5, which is Thornwood Avenue, um, a lot of intense construction activity on Thornwood Avenue. We're building a, a very large junction chamber, which is a big underground, um, manhole, basically, between, um, the park and Hunter and a large diameter storm sewer. So this work will start in June and take us, uh, right through the end of November. This is a graphic illustration of our intent to build as much during the summer months as possible. So if you take a look at the three months, uh, straddling June through August, there is a significant amount of construction activity, Stage 2, 3, and 4, and 5, all during that, that. that summer break period. And then you can see stage, stage one, a little bit of stage two, and then three and five overlapping when school is in session. I want to be respectful of everybody's time, so I, we didn't provide detailed maps for every stage, but they are available on our website. We've provided them to residents. We'll have a pre-construction meeting next month. So there's a lot more information, but this is an example of the detailed information that we have for each stage. It covers things like access and parking and sidewalks. For Thornwood Park, I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple important points. And that is the red circles. These are the locations for truck traffic entering the park and exiting the park. So the circle down at the bottom of the page on Thornwood Avenue, this is where trucks will be coming into the park. They will primarily be coming from the east, up from Hunter, down Thornwood Avenue, and then into the park. And they will exit on Dartmouth. So from Dartmouth, they will turn south and then head west out to Illinois Road. So that's the general truck pattern into and out of the school. I'm sorry, the park. This next map is a little bit more detailed to show the outline of the Thornwood Park excavation. What's really nice about the park work is it's self-contained. Once that construction fence goes up, it is a protected work zone with locked gates. So from a safety perspective, it's a very safe zone. There will be flaggers at each of the entrance and exits. So at that Thornwood Park, exit on Thornwood as well as on Dartmouth, there will be flaggers at those locations. So as trucks go in, as trucks leave the site, if there's anybody walking on the sidewalk, the flagger will stop the truck, let the pedestrian cross safely, and then let the truck traffic out. This map will be important when we talk more about parking impacts. The parking from the, if we look at Dartmouth, and we'll talk about it north of the access and south of the access. The parking south of that exit point will be, will not be available. Parking north of that point will be available at all times. And I've got a more detailed image of that coming up. Just to speak about truck traffic, we've written it into the contract. Truck traffic will stay on the major arterials in Wilmette, on Skokie Boulevard, Lake Avenue, Hunter, Illinois Road, and of course Thornwood Avenue will be a primary artery as well to get trucks to and from the park. So I know it's really important to the school on what the parking impacts will be as well as the roadway impacts. So the next two graphics are intended to just show a quick snapshot of that. The, if you look at the rows, the row, the top row is when school is out of session. And the second row is when school is back in session between August and November. So again, Dartmouth, north of that construction access, that parking will be available throughout the duration of the project, so from June all the way through November. If we look at the school time, I'm sorry, when school is not in session between June and the start of school, the section south of that construction entrance on Dartmouth will not be available. So if there's any school activities, just plan to park on the north side of Dartmouth. The contractor believes that as soon as school starts in August, we should be able to open that parking up. I, we put a little asterisk there. So there could be a couple weeks and at the end of August when school starts to a couple weeks in September, where that southern parking on Dartmouth may be closed while the contractor is reconstructing that area. We will push them extremely hard to get it done and ready for teachers. But please note that that is a possibility that that parking would not be available. I've already been in touch with the principal on Dub Now about options for teachers. So we know we can accommodate them in the neighborhood, but that will be a parking impact potentially. And let's talk about parking on Thornwood. We've divided this up between east of Dartmouth and west of Dartmouth. Thornwood, east of Dartmouth, there is so much construction activity between Dartmouth and Hunter that through, through access, cars going through there will be closed. So if you live on Thornwood, you'll be able to access your home for the majority of the time, but through traffic will not be allowed. West of that area will be closed during the summer months as we're running heavy truck traffic in and out of the park. And then as soon as school starts in August, west of Dartmouth will be back open for parking. And street closures in and around Harper School. Again, when school is in session, mid-August through November, there will be no impact to the pickup and drop-off line on Dartmouth that will be available to parents at all times. On Thornwood itself, that east section between Dartmouth and Hunter, that will be closed to both parking and through traffic. And then west of Thornwood Park will be available for teachers again and for traffic the entire time. So west of Thornwood, no impact to traffic through truck. We'll be able to make it through when school is in session. Here's your project team, primarily the same team we've had in place for the first two phases. The person at the top of the page, Lisa Brock, she is the star of the show. She is our stakeholder coordinator. She is your primary contact, as well as myself, as we work through this construction phase. But her phone number is well-known to school district staff. The communications, I think first and foremost, we hope to have weekly meetings with the school district staff, although we are available to them 24/7 as issues come up. We also have weekly updates that are extremely informative to the residents in the area, so they know what's going on. Our website is updated regularly, hand-delivered notices. Basically, all media options available to us, we use as we, we use as we work through the construction process. And as a, if you're a resident, if you don't already subscribe to E-News, we ask that you go to our website, sign up for the Village E-News list. There's a box for neighborhood storage project. And that will make sure you, that way you will have the most up-to-date information on the project as we, as we build it. And our website, again, has all of, all the resources that will inform you about the project. So village board approval is tomorrow night. We will have a pre-construction kickoff meeting with school district staff in February. And March 1, we will hit the ground running up in that Beechwood neighborhood. The park work will start right after Memorial Day, June 1. And then Thornwood Park should be completed on October 31. Again, the last couple months are dedicated to restoration and trying to get the grass to grow. I'll keep in mind, similar to Community Playfield, the park will not be open to the public until probably late spring of 2023, just to allow enough time for the, for that new grass to germinate and establish. The project completion date is end of November. And I think that is it for us. And we're happy to take any questions. Again, we have Darren Olson, our design consultant, project manager with us, as well as Lisa Brock.
So I'm sure there's a number of questions, Lisa.
I had a concern with the original phase. In terms of noise and dust, when we sit there and think about the schedule, windows are going to be open. You're going to start the project according to your timeline when it's warm out. And you're going to be in the last phases of phases three and five when it's warm out and school starts. So how do we intend on managing dust and noise, given the proximity to the school?
Sure. The, very similar to a Community Playfield. The contractor will have watering trucks on site, both in the park as well as watering down the roads leading to and from the park to help reduce the dust that's kicked up. That said, it is a construction site, so there will be some dust. But on those really hot, dry, windy days, that's when the dust control will do its job. As far as noise, the 10-foot fence will buffer some of the noise. I don't recall noise being a tremendous concern for the neighbors surrounding Community Playfield. So it'll be the same level of noise activity. But recall, in that case, those residents backed right up to the park. And there really weren't any noise complaints, so I wouldn't expect there to be any in this phase as well.
Can I just ask? I mean, we were remote last time, so I don't know that we can go beyond that. But in terms of district, Carrie, I'm just wondering, are you, what concerns do you have about that?
At this point, I think the biggest issues that we need to continue to work through is traffic in and around the building and parking for staff and for families who need to access during school time. Obviously, if timeline changes, that would be another worry. But it sounds like Bridget and the team have planned accordingly for that. So hopefully, that is in good order. This project is a little different, as Bridget mentioned, than the Playfield project because there isn't an intergovernmental agreement. They're not using school property for it. But there is still an impact, as Bridget was explaining, in terms of traffic and parking, so.
So for that summer, I mean, do, I guess, well, I'm sure we don't have anything planned that our kids would use Thornwood. And obviously, Harper is going to have construction. So relatively speaking, from a school standpoint, we don't have anything that draws children to that area.
Right. It would be an impact more on the park district and their programming than on our program. We will not be planning to use Harper for any summer programming for students during that time. For our own students, excuse me.
It was one of the reasons we decided to do the Harper construction in the summer also. So parking, are you comfortable that the teachers will be able to park?
I think it's something that will be a moving target. We'll have to keep working on that. Unfortunately, it likely will mean teachers may need to walk a little bit further. Parking is already challenging at Harper. If you've ever gone to visit Harper during a school day, parking happens all the way along all of those roads there. So that will be a challenge, but I'm confident we'll be able to work through that. And hopefully, our staff can be flexible and the village can be flexible with those alternate parking locations that we can identify for staff. And quite frankly, for families, too. I know myself even, as I visit Harper during the day, if I'm not there before school starts, parking can be a challenge. So we'll have to keep an eye on that.
That would be the primary one. I know we've had, we've wanted and have worked well with the community to make sure that our parking needs don't disrupt the community more than necessary. And this is going to make it even harder on the community because there'll be less parking spots and more need in some ways.
Absolutely, in many ways.
Okay, so as long as.
Similar lines, our construction in the summer with their construction, you all will be able to work through that traffic and.
So if you were to look at a map, my anticipation and expectation is that our construction crews, trades, would come down that dead-end road on Greenwood and go to the blacktop area west of Harper. That's, you know, where I expect them to have dumpsters and to where them park and drop stuff off. And so I would suspect that that's where, at least that's where I would be directing them to, to focus where to go. And that should eliminate as much overlap as possible with the village.
And the roads aren't like closed. It's just going to be a lot of truck traffic and construction traffic. And, you know, so there's a little bit more construction traffic, so hopefully.
I think if I heard from Bridget, some of the roads will be closed at different times, only open to residents. Bridget, is that true?
So the toughest section is going to be Thornwood between Dartmouth and Hunter. There may be times when it's completely closed to through traffic. And during those times, that's the purpose of our weekly meetings with the school district, is we'll find out what activities you have, what type of equipment you need to get in, and we will work with you to make sure that that happens. For the most part, though, if that'll be coming from the west. If our trucks are coming from the east, if you come in from the west, that should be fine. But again, it's that close coordination as things come up that we will work through.
Yeah, two more questions. The first is, do we rely on Thornwood Park for some of our thesis or P E programming?
We use it occasionally, but we tend to use our own school grounds more frequently.
And the second is, this is for the village. What outreach and communication are you planning for the residents around the school and the parents of Harper?
We have had three meetings with the residents this past year during both the preliminary design phase, as we were developing the plans. And then most recently in September, as the plans became final. So the neighbors have had many opportunities to come and talk to us about the project. And again, we'll have another pre-construction open house with the residents as well in February. Any resident within the vicinity or impacted by the construction work will receive a door hanger, a flyer. So if they don't want to come to the meetings, they will have that opportunity to learn about the project, you know, and written material that's provided to their door. As, as well as, like I said, E-News will have the weekly updates moving forward as soon as we start construction. So the feedback from the neighbors has been extremely positive so far. They understand the need for this project. They've been appreciative of the level of communication and outreach that we've had since day one. And our motto is no surprises. You know, once we put the first shovel in the ground, we don't want anybody surprised that we're there. And I don't expect that to be the case.
Hey, Bridget, one other thing regarding the parents we're meeting with the PTO in the near term?
Yep.
I had a question. I gotta say, I'm really grateful that, for this presentation. It means a lot to us. And I think I'm as, at least as concerned about noise, I think, as all of you. I wonder, I was trying to think of the sources of the noise. I mean, trucks are loud. And my recollection is that that's probably a big part of what's going to happen here because you're removing a lot of earth over a pretty long period of time. And there's going to be a lot of truck deliveries down that road. I forget which road that is. That's Thornwood by the school. Is that the exit route, basically?
Yeah, so trucks leaving the site will exit on Dartmouth, go south on Dartmouth, and then west on Thornwood.
Pardon me if you already said this. So how many truckloads do you think there'll be?
We estimated, so. Delivery of the stone and the storm trap pieces, we're estimating between 6,000 and 7,000 trucks will be required to do the work within the park.
I, but, but I do think it's important to emphasize, the contractor, Burger Excavating, they believe the majority of the excavation to dig the hole, to put the storm trap product in the ground, and then to basically restore the site, the majority of that work will be done by the time school starts in August. So the number of heavy trucks moving through the area will drop off dramatically once school starts.
I appreciate that. Yeah. So am I hearing that, that most of the trucking will be done over the summer then?
Correct. With the exception to that is all the activity on Thornwood. And the Thornwood activity is basically from that red circle to the east, so toward Hunter. So it's a little bit further away from the school.
You, and apologies if you already addressed this. Do you foresee any supply chain issues?
That's a great question. We don't see any at this point, but we're doing every, you know, contractors already ordering material and equipment. Soon as the ink won't be dry on the contract, and he will be getting his orders placed so that we have everything we need to build the project in time.
Okay, I would, one more, and I'll stop. But if, I mean, I assume, I mean, we have such a good relationship with you guys, I know we're good. So we'll probably hear about it if there is a supply chain issue. So anyway, yeah, appreciate you keeping us in the loop. Thank you so much, Bridget.
Absolutely.
So I know with the last project, we talked about lighting on the site because we were concerned about safety. It is a little different. This is not in our backyard like it was with High Crest. And as it turned out, we didn't have students on campus. But is there any plan, I don't feel strongly that we need it, but I just want to bring up the idea of lighting, you know, with a deep hole in a playground proximate to our school?
Sure. Yeah, the same safety elements that we've used on the other two phases will be used here. So there will be lighting. There will be a security camera with full 24/7 viewing of the site. Again, for safety reasons, the police and fire departments have access to that link.
Great.
And, yeah, so we do want to save some.
Thank you.
I just want to go back and push on John's question about the supply chain. We've been hearing in our own construction, even when we are very proactive and preorder well in advance, we're having some unexpected challenges, and I think it's very reasonable, especially in light of, this is an unusual project with very large pieces of, I guess, supplies, I don't know the right word. I'm concerned, what is the contingency plan?
So the things that most impact the school, basically the work at the park. And it's very, it's actually very simple construction. It's big excavators digging a hole. And the product, the storm trap pieces, they're precast concrete vaults that make up the vault itself. The village actually pre-purchased the vault with the vendor last fall so that they could begin manufacturing it and have all the pieces made in time for June, when the contractor will start setting them. So as far as that component, we are on top of it and recognize the potentially long lead time. But again, no indication of any constructing, manufacturing issues on that product at all. So I don't expect that to be an issue. The equipment that go into the pump station or the generator, that probably has the greatest potential for being a lead or a supply chain concern. But again, that does not impact the construction, the sequencing of the schedule. That has more to do with the operation and startup of the tank itself. And that's something that actually can linger. Our only issue would be if we had a big rainstorm and we couldn't operate it properly. But as far as building the site, that would not come into play at all.
All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate the update and continue updates, especially as they impact schedules. We know that there's a lot of variability there, but it's important, as we said in the earlier presentation, the sooner we know something, the more ability we have to work around it. Thank you very much. Anything else for them?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fairly long facilities presentation. I hand it back to Amy for a fairly long finance.
I will turn it over to Mr. Cesaretti for school finance. I don't know if we want to take a break now or after finance. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back for finance. Cesaretti.
Thank you, President Paling. So we have quite a full agenda for the finance committee. I'm going to turn it over to, I think, Corey for all of it.
Okay, thank you. So we have several items here for finance committee. Some of them will go quite quick. So the first thing up is fiscal 2023 budget calendar and resolution. As a matter of process, the board, we'll ask the board next board meeting on January 24th to vote to establish a fiscal year and then kind of direct us to start that budget process. So that is like an official board action. I've included a budget calendar for reference. Kind of a couple of the key points that I see in the calendar that really would have big impacts on the budgeting process. The January 24th and February 14th meetings, where we would review and potentially approve capital projects. Then when we spin forward to the spring and May and June, where we really dive into the draft budget. You know, one of the additional things that should match up and probably fall in that April to June timeframe is taking a hard, taking that detailed look at what are we seeing for capital projects for the next, you know, five-plus years? And having that information from Nicholas and S T R on what some of the costs might be for those projects. And then kind of talking through and lining those up into our budget. And then ideally, trying to come to some sort of consensus by the June meeting, what projects we might want to tackle for the following summer. Then we would follow that up with the official budget adoption in August, as we've done previously. And then, once we move into the fall, we would start our annual tax levy process with estimating it, holding a public hearing, and presenting that to the board for official approval in potentially November. And then we'd wrap up the year with our annual five-year projections in December of 2022. So this is a similar timeline to what we've had for the past calendar year and includes many of the same, if not the identical, steps throughout the process. Happy to answer any questions about this, if there are any.
Questions? No, I mean, it looks consistent with prior years, more detailed. Thank you.
All right, so the next item up for discussion, as we talked about last month, with the presentation from Liz Hennessy at Raymond James, we have the issuance of debt certificates and the opportunity for the district to move forward with that. So a couple of things. All right, so included in board docs for the board members, we have three things. We had an updated operating fund summary with the 6.5 million of debt certificates. We had a timeline, and I'll go through both of those. And we also had about 40 pages of draft resolution documents that I wanted to share with the board. I got that info from legal counsel at the end, very end of last week. And the board can look through that as, I'm not going to go through it in detail. But it's the documents that we would ask the board to approve at the January 24th board meeting. And what you see in there is that the headline says 6.85 million of debt certificates, not to exceed. And the reason for that is, you know, we were targeting 6.5 million in new money with the caveat that we pay it back in a decade. And the annual principal and interest payment stays at 1 million or just under. The likely is that it would be like 997,000 or 998,000. So the, kind of the summary or planning information that Liz had provided to us included about a 0.5% cushion in interest rate. Because we are trying to move this process along quite quickly, there could be the opportunity, if rates hold steady or if we get really favorable sale amounts, that we could stay below that 1 million amount and capture potentially a couple hundred thousand extra. That is our tentative plan, which is why the language says it's 6.85, even though my summary document shows 6.5 million. So the one document I have is the operating fund summary. You scroll, if you look at the fiscal year 2023 column down in the other financing source, I've added 6.5 million. I fully realize that we are going to attempt to initiate or complete this transaction in fiscal year 22. When I was working in the software, it wasn't coming out the way I'd hoped by adjusting the budget for fiscal year 22, so I just put it in 23. What you see is, across the board, with the current composition of capital projects, you know, fund balance in the mid-40% range across all the years. Let me look at the timeline. So as I said, we are moving quickly. You know, that is at the recommendation of Liz. She felt like the sooner we get that done, the less chance there is to see any upticks in market. So there was a lot of activity last week on this front. We have set one of the big barriers, two of the bigger things that need to happen. The board needs to approve the resolution issue. And then the district needs to go through a ratings call with Moody's. We're going to do that on Friday, the 21st. And then after that, we'll get our, you know, official bond rating for the sale. With the board, if the board were to go ahead and approve the parameters on Monday, the 24th, we're targeting a sale date via competitive public sale on Wednesday, February 2nd. So we are moving quickly, just in talking with Liz last week. And really, from the middle to later parts of December, this is realistically about as quick a timeline as we're going to get, which is good. I'm glad we're able to. And one of the key dates there is that sale date. That's where you know what your interest rate, you're locking it in, even though it might take, you know, potentially a few weeks or even up to a month to close and actually receive the money from the transaction. And then just one kind of trailer part to all this. You know, as Liz mentioned, we would, we would then be waiting until the fall to do the refunding component of the existing debt certificates, just because there's limitations on how quickly, how soon before the call date we can refund without impacting the tax-exempt status of the bonds. One other comment related to this. Historically, District 39, at least from what I have observed and looked back on, is that the district passes a budget in August and has not really had to go through the budget amendment process. One of the things that is unique about potentially for us this year, and I'm working through it with legal counsel on whether we'll need to do this or not. I think it's likely that we will need to go through the budget amendment process. You know, this was not really on our radar to do in fiscal year 22 when we were doing the budgeting process. And, you know, so to really to issue that much money and then, you know, potentially have a little bit more in interest costs, there may be. In very fiscal year 22, I think it's likely that we will have to go through that and do an amendment. The process is very similar to when you do the original budget. You know, you have to, you know, post notice, you, you know, present it at a board meeting, have the public be able to view it. So that is something that, once I work through things more this month, I'll kind of update the, my plan is to update the board at the February committee of the hall. More definitive, yes, we're going to amend, or no, we're not. But it won't, it'd be one of those things where the process from what you, what the board might see won't be as detailed as the original budget. It'll be like, hey, we're amending, here's the few things that we're amending, not versus like, hey, we're amending every component of our budget. So, so really, that's kind of the plan. It's a quick timeline. I think it's a good move by the district to try and lock in what are some really good low-interest rates. If anybody has any questions about the process, I'm happy to answer them, or.
Yeah, great. I wanted to translate that, so. I think what you're saying is Liz thinks interest rates are going up, so we better move fast. So you move fast, which we really appreciate.
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the amended budget, which I think is a good idea from a historical standpoint. It's easier to track what happened or where we are. I assume we'll very tightly constrain what things we change. So it'll just be like, like you said, the new bond money, the new interest payments. And effectively, we won't try to clean up other things.
That's one of those things. I would take the direction of the board. If the board said, hey, go back and clean up a bunch of things, I would do that. If the board says, hey, let's just eliminate some of the things that are kind of directly impacted from this transaction, then I would do that as well. So I'll, on that particular, if we decide to go down the amended budget path, I will take whatever direction the board offers, on how much or how little we amend.
Okay, thank, great question, Frank. Thank you. Yeah, Corey, we'll leave it to you.
But let us know.
No, absolutely.
How you did it.
Excellent. Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
No, I think, you know, I think it goes without saying. Part of it would be some sort of one-page document of, these are, this is where we were at, this is the changes that are included. Just a one-page summary so everybody can see exactly what got changed.
Love it.
As a one person, my default preference would be that to keep it as constrained as possible. Again, from just a historical standpoint of how did we do on budgeting? You know, if it's clear-cut that what we changed was this one thing, it's easier to identify that. But I don't have a strong opinion, but, you know, I get to say, you know, as a one person.
Yeah, it's a good point, Frank. Any other thoughts, questions?
So I think, I think if I'm reading the room, we will bring back the resolution for approval in two weeks and go from there.
Yeah, thank you so much for accelerating this.
Okay, so the next topic, Senate Bill 508. Talked about this a few times. Feels like just a, you know, kind of a never-ending, always-fluid situation. So let me pull up what I had shared with the. All right. So here's kind of the summary, at least is how I view it. So Senate Bill 508, when it was passed effective for the 2021 tax levy, which the board approved last November, mandates that we would add in any prior years refunds on top of the board-approved levy. The period is November 1st through October 31st. You would see this show up on taxpayer bills in the second installment, probably due next August. So the first impact for us is the fiscal year 23 budget. The way that the bill is written, it's mandatory, there's no option, it's just very cut and dry, whether you want it or like anything. However, we've had some movement since our meetings last month on this topic. We received notice of what the amount was. Myself, I track our refunds anytime they're processed. So for the period under question, I came to 1,090,000 in refunds of all types. Cook County, the amount that their treasurer's office sent out is 771,000. Hey, 319,000, that's kind of a big difference. And when I look at it, the things that are all included, I'm not seeing any caveats that would lead to this. And to kind of further lend some support to our amount being accurate, I had a meeting in December, middle of December, with our attorney and all the other new tree or business officials. And I brought this up, and everybody else came to the same conclusion. The amount, pretty much every business manager tracks refunds because that's such a big impact. Everybody saw the same thing, six-figure differences between the amount they got for that period and what the treasurer's office had. At the moment, we're waiting on responses from the assessor's office or the clerk and the treasurer's office. Our attorney is using some of their contacts to try and find out where that difference might be. But for the. But for the time being, for the conversation that we're about to have, we'll use seven hundred seventy one thousand as the amount we're going to talk about until we get any further clarification. So the tax, the most recent actual tax extension for the district, including debt service, which was fifty eight point four seven million dollars. So if we think about what the treasurer's office is saying is that they're going to add on the seven seventy one, that comes to roughly one point three two percent of last year's extension. So the one of the reasons I put that in there, I think about it as, you know, we have that nice slide that says, you know, the average Womet taxpayer is going to see a one point four percent increase from the D thirty nine levy. So the way I would interpret this is we add this on one point four plus one point three. Now, the average existing taxpayer is seeing a two percent, two point seven percent increase from District thirty nine. That's how I would interpret as is. Now, the surprising part of the communication that came out in December with our, with our amounts was that despite what the law says, which our attorneys have said is feels pretty clear, the county clerks, and this I think is happening in more than just Cook County, they're, they're taking the attitude of if a local community votes, their board says, we don't want this added amount. Why should we be forced to do that to our, you know, to our, to our citizens? So what they have told us is we have a couple of options related to this. We can either remain status quo and take no board action, in which case the seven hundred seventy thousand would get added to our levy. Or they have proposed it in a way that districts can either abate part of that amount, or they could abate the whole thing. So they're basically giving a, giving an option to local boards. And so you'd have to approve an abatement resolution during a board meeting. If you go down that path, that resolution needs to be filed with the county clerk by April. So basically, within the next three months. So that's really where we found, find ourselves, and that's kind of a new dynamic or a new piece of information as of middle of December. I'll open up for discussion or if you're wanting my thoughts on the topic.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So you said that other mature businesses saw a discrepancy. Was the discrepancy always to their disadvantage?
Yes. Yeah, the amount was always lower than what we as business managers had calculated. So I, you know, part of me thinks whoever ran this report for all the taxing bodies in Cook County at the treasurer's office, did they forget a tax year? The one thing that was interesting as I talked with our attorney, if you look at the refunds that were allocated, that were specifically due to tax year twenty twenty, they were three hundred sixteen thousand. Our difference is about three hundred nineteen. Could that be it? Could somebody have put in the wrong parameters? You know, there's different types of refunds. That's where my brain's at. Our attorney feels like the Senate Bill five oh eight instructions of how to calculate that were very cut and dry of what's to be included and what's not. I think the one type of refund was a illegal rate, rate objection, of which we either had zero or none, and those are something that take, they're probably a decade behind in processing. So I would, I would have expected the amount that I had to come very, very close, certainly not three hundred thousand. So and then, I guess to add before, before we have more discussion, on that same call, there's kind of a straw poll of what other mature districts might do. Do we abate? Do we keep it? I won't say all of them, and it certainly was just a straw poll because their boards will certainly have to make their own decisions. But I definitely got the impression that not, pretty close to all, or maybe all will, will keep it, will keep this on. Now, keep in mind, within that component or within that grouping, you have some that are going out for large construction projects. And their viewpoint was, we have things that we know we need to address. We also have voca with another issue financially. So not every district within that our group, you know, is faced with the exact same set of circumstances. But that is kind of what I, what I heard. Now, that mirrors what actually happens, I guess we'll see, but so.
You anticipated my question. Thank you.
Can we stop sharing?
I have a.
Yes, sorry, Frank.
Understanding, I have a question related to the abatement process in general. Independent of this, if, you know, we've done it once or twice in the past. If we decided that we wanted to do a small abatement, would that be a different process in this abatement? Or this just codifies the date that we would have been dealing with if we had decided just because we had a need to, a desire to give a little bit of money back? Is this a different abatement process or?
I mean, I think the, I think the wording on the abatement resolution would be a little different because you're talking about a specific add on. But the process would be similar, I think, in that you can, what I've experienced in my career is that you can typically go until about that April first. There's been times where I think Cook County had maybe told school districts, like, if you want to abate anything, do it by March first. But they've, I have a letter that says April first, so clearly they're comfortable with that. So I think from a process standpoint, it'd be very, very similar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at it from the logistics. I'm not sure we want to or would agree to or, or any of those type of things. But it, it seems to me that if we abated part of it, but it just got, it got blended in and then it looked like, okay, there's a tax increase. And we would know it was a smaller tax increase, but it was buried in that, that we didn't take as much as we could have, didn't receive as much as we could have, better word. It kind of gets lost. And I mean, the point, if we ever decided to do an abatement would be there's a certain amount of visibility that gets lost. So I was just wondering if, you know, effectively, the, the bill goes up. And as a second step, if we decided we wanted to do a baitment, it would be a little bit more visible. And, and again, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand the parameters, so for.
Let me make sure I understand what you're saying, Frank. So you're saying just like we in the past and, and sometimes in the present, talk about abating in general.
Yeah.
Right. So you're saying, is that any different than this?
Yeah, because what it looks like here is if, and, and again, I'm, I'm not advocating, I'm just understanding the parameter. If we said, yeah, you know, maybe we'll, we'll abate half of it.
Right.
From a taxpayer's standpoint, what they'd see is the tax bill went up. They wouldn't have seen that we rebated half of it. So what I'm saying is if we ever decided that we wanted to abate, is there a way we can do it that's more visible? You know, this is what was defined and we've analyzed it and we've decided that, you know, you know, make it a two step thing instead of a one step thing. And I just want to like, understand, because.
I, I think that's really thoughtful.
A one percent increase instead of a one and a half percent increase, they won't remember the one and a half percent.
Yeah. I had a couple of thoughts. So just to bring it way back. We have historically, from a budgeting perspective, always not, well, we, I don't know. I don't know what you want to call it, but we've always sort of reserved an amount to be paid back to all the taxpayers that win their appeals. Because it comes out of our, our budget. So what's happened, and, and I, I don't know, my impression was that this was a pretty unusual system from around the country, that, that the money would come out of the budgets of a school district or whatever, village, park district, you name it. So my understanding of five oh eight is that they said, okay, we're going to take that uncertainty off the table. So now the, the money that you out and levy, you can keep it, you know, we'll just, in the, the pay, the, the people who win their appeals, like, they'll get paid. But then the money that, that comes out of essentially our budget will come back because we're going to re-levy to everybody else. Like to the whole group, right, the people in the next year. I think that's what's happening. And then I think what you're saying is, well, there's this opportunity to abate that amount. So, and I think what Frank is saying is, well, okay, you know, you could do that, or you could also just do a separate abatement if you wanted to, based on the strength of the budget. So I think that's what you're saying. Am I characterizing it correctly?
Yeah, that, I mean, again, it does, it occurred to me, if taxpayers see an increase, but it wasn't as big of an increase as they expected, that gets lost.
Yeah.
So if, if we ever decided that we wanted to abate, that I would I'd want to consider doing it as a more visible step instead of having it just be, you know, your, your bill went up seven percent, but it would have gone up seven and a half percent instead of you're sending some money back.
Yeah.
Just understanding the parameters.
Yeah, sensible.
Sounds like we'd be able to do that.
Yeah.
You know, process wise, it's something, I mean, it might not hit the same tax year, but I mean, process wise, we could do an abatement.
Yeah.
Right. So for the, the tax, you know, for the twenty twenty one taxes which are paid now during this current calendar year, you know, if, if you're trying to do any abatement related to that levy or that tax year, it's got to be, we've got to file it by April first of this year. So if we decided to wait and, you know, look back on stuff, you know, you can always abate it for the next year, but then that would be on that year's, that year's taxes. And then to your, to your, kind of your comment about the system coming out of our collections, you know, that's why our, our, kind of our ten year historical net collection rate is about ninety eight point six. And we've typically, you know, on a one year basis, we'll budget it a little bit lower. But, you know, that's where that reef, the amount of refunds comes into play, you know, our, our collections would be a hundred percent if there wasn't refunds, you know, or it would be near a hundred percent instead of in the ninety eight percent. Or, you know, some years it might be ninety seven point eight, some years it might be, you know, ninety eight point nine. That's all due to the peaks and valleys of refunds.
Yeah, no, thanks, Corey. I, I mean, does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Because we could talk about it, like, some more. I do really appreciate your, I think we all do appreciate your very thoughtful presentation. Appreciate you doing a straw poll of what the other governing units are doing. So, but.
Do you think it'll be important for us to keep watch of what they're doing once boards discuss it as well? Just to make sure we're not outliers unless we want to be?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I think we've brought up, or this is a, a significant amount of money. We don't want it to just kind of, you know, go into the background. Oh, good, our reserves went up by point five percent or one percent. Do the arithmetic and we had one percent a little bit over that. We could at least decide if there's a need for this money, specific need as opposed to a firming up our finance need. And if they're not, that's great. But if there is, this is, you know, something that comes in now for at least a couple of years until they came along. So somewhere, I don't know when, we need to discuss what, what are the options for this money? I mean, maybe the right thing is to solidify our reserves, which aren't super high compared to the other districts. I mean, they're actually, I think we're the lowest in the mature in terms of our reserve size. But, you know, if there's something else that, that's appropriate, do we have a time when we would discuss that now that we have a number or? Should we talk about having a time to discuss that?
No, I, I defer to Kerry and Corey on, on that. So I'm, I'm given the uncertainty in the amount. So I think, I, I really appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah, I would hope that we would get clarification this month. I would be extremely disappointed if I don't get an answer on why, why they're different.
Yeah.
Like I said, we still have a couple of months to potentially review it, so.
Any other thoughts? All right, thank you. Thanks, Corey.
Okay, the next item up is a potential supplemental debt service levy. Let me share my screen so I can kind of walk through this. All right. So I briefly mentioned this in different meetings. But one of the, one of the things that we, we need, we need to consider is, is passing a resolution to capture a supplemental debt service levy for, for the, for the tax year twenty twenty one. So the, I'm sharing this screen, I'll kind of walk you through. So on the left hand side, you see the tax year. And then the next column, you see the debt service extension base. So the debt service extension base in twenty twenty was one point five six nine. Now, why that is relevant is that was the amount that was known when the district issued bonds in the spring of twenty twenty. And so one of the ways to pay back bonds that we, that we issue is through in a debt, debt service extension base levy. And so what this amount in that, that first column, the second column is if you can keep your principal and interest payments to that amount or less, you can add that to your, your annual tax extension only with a board approval of, of the bonds. And as opposed to going through a referendum process. So as long as you can stay there. So one of the things, and so the idea of a supplemental levy is while it's not common, it's certainly not extremely rare. And I've done this at other districts. I've been told that District thirty nine has done this in the past at times. And so what you see is each year as CPI becomes known, the debt service expansion base grows a little bit at a time. And so when you issue bonds, because of the way that our laws are written, you can only, only approve and file with the amounts that are known at the time. Which is why when you go to the fourth column, twenty twenty bond levies, you see for years twenty twenty one through twenty twenty four, that amount matches exactly the debt service extension base of twenty twenty. They knew that, like, we can't go over there, but we know that there's probably going to be a CPI increase in future years. And that's where the supplemental levy comes in. So if you go to the, the fifth column where it's highlighted yellow, you'll see small amounts growing a little bit each year of potential supplemental debt levy amounts that we could pass a resolution and capture that amount to pay off our principal and interest in each of these tax years. So the, the total debt service due column on the, over second from the right, that is the total amount of debt service that is due in each of those tax years. And you can see with the assumed large CPI increase for, for the most recently completed calendar year, which that amount will be known this Wednesday, so two days from now. That will likely get finalized and should stay well above five percent. And then the five percent for this is the cap. That would push our debt service extension base to one point six seven million, high enough to allow us to pass one resolution and capture the supplemental debt levies for all future years from that twenty twenty bond issuance. So that's really the option. So the total, if you add up those yellows, I think it's like two hundred and twenty to two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Where we would be capturing. The flip side is if you, if we opted not to pass it, we would just have to cover that principal and interest payment with the existing, existing amounts in our debt service fund. One of the things as far as like structuring debt or, you know, is this common and how it's structured? Yes, it's, it's a fairly common way to structure debt to assume that you're going to see a little bit of an increase in your debt service extension base. Historically, I've seen attorneys, bond attorneys, assume about a one point five percent. Um, historically, I've seen attorneys, bond attorneys, assume about a 1.5% increase over the long term when you're trying to structure how much you might be able to afford when you're issuing bonds. Um, so it's it's not uncommon, what what we're asking the board to consider. So really, the the the, I guess the thing for discussion or for consideration for the board is um, historically, they've wanted this supplemental levy um, to them by the end of February, our February meetings, the last day of the month, which is why I'm presenting now, we potentially take action on January 24th. So really, the way this would be structured, if the board is supportive, we would have a resolution that would say, that would direct Cook County to capture those amounts in yellow for all four of those years. Um, and then the board would vote and then it would be done. So it's really the the thing to consider. Does the board wanna capture this additional amount each of those years? Or do we not? And, you know, pay for it out of existing debt service amounts?
Any thoughts on this? Do you have a thought?
I I had a question, really. Um, I, with the with the other levies, there's the issue of, um, if we don't capture the allowed levy, you can't make it up another year. Is there a similar thing with this? Um, so if if we decided not to pass it this year, next year, we could, is that?
Correct, so like if, so for the, so really, you know, what I would, what you could potentially be voting on is this for all four years, but really the thing that would be gone and done if we don't take any action next, or in two weeks, is that the 21,966 that you could never go back and get. You would always have the option then, next fall or this year, the next time to do the 43,000 or the 67 or the 90. So, um, so really, the the more immediate is the 21,000, yes or no? Um, but you could also lump in the others, that way you don't have to go through the process of approving our own resolution every single year.
Yeah, cause you don't, uh, structurally, with the other levy, it's really important that we don't lock ourselves into something that that compounds over time. I I have an opinion, but.
Yeah, listen.
Cory, are you worried? I mean, I I started thinking, I'm assuming this is your recommendation that we vote. And are we worried about the impact of inflation, rising inflation on the budget, given our salaries or tax CPI? Um, it it feels to me like it might be prudent.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
I said it might be prudent going down this path given inflation. And our our budget, the majority of our budget is tied to salaries, which is tied to CPI.
So this amount would come out of our debt service fund, and money in that fund is levied for, it can only be spent on principal and interest payments, so it's outside of our operating funds. So the, from my perspective, there's really kind of two paths. One, if you were to say, could the debt service fund absorb and afford this over the next four-year tax years? The answer is yes, there is existing reserves to cover this. However, one of the nice things that I've experienced in my career with having some reserves in your debt service fund is if you, if we were to capture this and keep those there, the next time that we were to go out to issue bonds or having that there provides flexibility during the issuance process. Um, whether that's to issue bonds a little bit sooner than you may have previously anticipated, or in the first year of issuing bonds, depending upon the time of the year that you issue them, it allows you to either maybe repay a small amount of principal or remake an interest payment out of existing reserves that, without tacking it on to a tax levy. So there there are some benefits to not, I guess, eating up some of your debt service reserves. Um, however, the flip side to that is, yes, we could, if we did nothing, we could still make our principal and interest payments and not be in an adverse situation. So it's really, you know, what what do we?
What is your recommendation?
Yeah, that's that's really what we want. Yeah.
We have a lot to, uh, the caveat is, there's a, where my thinking is, is there's a lot of things that, hey, I'm thinking about and we're planning for over the next handful of months. I think to offer us the maximum flexibility, I would capture these. Um, they're 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 small amounts on any given year, like as I think on the last section, our total levy is like 58.47 million, so 20,000 or 40,000 is so small that to any one taxpayer, that's, I don't know, a penny, maybe, a couple pennies probably, it's it's really, really small, probably not noticeable. And I would just not wanna eat up some of the, some of that potential flexibility, not knowing how our planning process might shake out or what might come of it. Um, so that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at.
That works for me. Are we, should we say, okay, we're good? Oh, sorry Frank.
I I just, um, I'm not in any way opposed to that, but I just, what I'm looking at is kind of the the some impact on taxpayers this year and next year. And and I don't have a preferred idea here necessarily, but I just wanted to kind of state it. So this year, I forgot the exact number, but let's just say 3% tax levy is approximately what.
So for the, what what will happen as a result of District 39? The taxes that people are gonna pay during this calendar year, our CPI increase is 1.4%. Then we have the Senate Bill 508, which could be another 1.3. So if we kept all that, that would be about 2.7 to existing taxpayers.
That's a little of the new property or?
The new property would be outside of that.
That's right, okay, so 2.7, I said 3, close as I'm ever gonna get to guessing. Um, and next year, based on anticipated inflation, they could see 5%. So the the only question in my mind would be, the 21,000 that we lose this year, that's that's so far in the noise that that that's not something that I would consider important. I'd, what I'd be looking at is, you know, this increase on top of the other increases, is it better to hit this year or next year? Or visibility is getting. Sounds like even with this, we'd be in the 3% range, and next year, we're almost definitely gonna be in the 5% range. So probably easier to to do it this year, but um, but that would be where my mind is, if that's the trade-off. Cause the 20,000, that's, that's not the deciding factor. About 200,000, I mean, that adds up, but the 20,000, that's that's.
Yeah. Okay, I I think you're, I see your point. Um, I think what I always worry about is, we have debt limitations statutorily anyway. And um, and I think what Cory is basically saying is, well, if we if we are already limited, then we should probably hit the max of the limitation, cause it's limited. And um, and then if we do have excess funds, we would abate them separately, so.
Yeah, I I wasn't even talking.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just, process-wise, I know there's a lot of focus on the levy itself. Um, like everything seems to be designed around it, but um.
Yeah, cause it, I mean, the, it it seems to blend in better this year because we're a little under 3% and next year, we're almost definitely gonna be at the 5%.
Yeah.
On the other hand, we're we're increasing this year with a 50, 508 bill, and then we're increasing this with on top of that. I I mean, it's it's more of a, how do we want it to be perceived? But, I mean, I think we end up at the same place. Whether it makes more sense this year or next, and beginning to, it sounds like it might be easier to do this year, but I just wanted to bring up that conversation.
No, it's great Frank, it's always good to remind ourselves of of how debt works and have these conversations, so. What do you need from us, Cory?
Uh, for this one, I really just would need to know whether, I I need to know how to direct the attorneys to draft a resolution, yes or no, you know, for for January 24th, that's really the question.
Okay, so do you have what you need?
I assume, I I'm understanding that I direct them, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, so the next topic is teachers' retirement system supplemental savings plan. Um, let me see if I have anything to share on this. Okay, so the first thing I wanna share related to this topic, so the TRS is adding a, an additional 457 that's available. Before I dive into the legal recommendation and the potential issues surrounding that, I just wanted to share with everybody where we're at as a district and what we offer. So we currently offer several options to our employees. Um, so what I'm, what you're seeing right here and what I'm sharing is the districts, uh, we use a company called TSA Consulting that manages and makes sure that everybody follows all the rules and regulations. Nobody goes over their contribution limits, and there's a lot of benefit in using them. So for 403Bs, we have 10 offerings. 457, we have three offerings. Roth 403B, we have four offerings, and Roth 457B, three offerings. So that's 20 different options. So when you think about, take a step back, regardless of what's going on with TRS, are we the really the target of of this? No, I think we offer a lot of things to to our employees. And I had um, had payroll check on this, just for reference, I thought maybe the board would be interested. So we have somewhere in the mid 500 to maybe upper 500 employees. When you count subs, we're routinely paying about 600 or maybe a little over 600 people each payroll. We have 231 people participating in one of these. So that's a pretty good participation rate. I was actually quite, given my my uh, history, like seeing this at different places, I was actually quite shocked, and I thought back to the way our contract is with the tier-two people and kind of incentivizing them to participate. Um, so that's kind of where we're at.
Cory, can you say that number again? What's the number that?
231 of our employees, and say, say that, let's just say there's 550 employees. So that's a, that's a, I mean, relative from what I've seen, that is a really good percentage. Um, sure, we'd like to see it more, but, you know, everybody can make their own decisions. So now we spin forward to what what has been passed as law and what TRS is trying to implement. So there, this is a non-optional mandated program where they they want us to participate. Um, it's a 457B through Voya, so it's only Voya, and it's a 457B. Um.
Sorry, what's Voya?
Voya is similar to like the sheet I had shared, it's similar to like an Equitable or Lincoln Investment.
Oh, thanks, okay.
The other investment. We currently don't offer anything through Voya. Um, there are many districts that do, we do not, um.
One more educational thing, what's the difference between a 403 and a 457? Cause I, I know 403, I'm kinda, 457, I've never heard of.
It, I I haven't dove down deep into like what it actually is or how it's different than a 403B. The only thing that I've ever really taken away from it is that it is a separate contribution limit, so say the limit is, I think, like 19 or 20,000. You can get 19 or 20,000 in a 403B, and then you can get it, like, the tax incentive or the tax deferred amount, another 19 or 20,000 into the 457. Oh, wow, okay. So, and then the Roth is obviously, it would be the after-tax.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So that's probably the one thing I think that I've noticed is that employees of like us would have two thing, or two thing, or a lot more to contribute to if they wanted to versus say a private, which they have before. So that gets us to the implementation. So when this came out, there was a lot of pushback because it was basically pushed through, no feedback solicited from like the triple I groups or attorneys that work on behalf of school districts. And they just said, and so when attorneys started to get involved, and we found out almost a year ago, hey, we're releasing this, you gotta have like six weeks to prove it, and everybody's like, oh, no, that's not happened, that's not how it works. Um, we now find ourselves where our attorneys have worked with them for a really long time. They've shored up some of the issues, there, but yet there still issues remain. So included in our board packet, there were four things. There was the kind of memo information that came from District 39 Legal Counsel recommending our course of action. There was kind of the signup sheet for an employee, and then there was two attachments that cover the the agreement between the district and TRS. So where we find ourselves at is instead of the the legal counsel recommending that the board approve participation, where we find ourselves is that they recommend that the board approve, uh, Dr. Krimis, Scolia and I to be able to sign participation documents at a later date um, when they've hopefully ironed out as many of these disagreements as possible. And the reason that that Barbette at Hodges is is recommending to all their clients this method is that, hey, this, they've seen some movement in the last month. Will all of it get fixed? Probably not, but there's always an opportunity to make it a little bit better from our perspective. And the one caveat is that they haven't mandated a date by which we join. Which is interesting because for any member of TRS, of which I am, they sent emails out in like November, December, saying, hey, we have this, it's, you can start signing up in January, you can start participating on March 1st. Well, that was also done without communication on the, on the school district side, to even seek feedback. So legal counsel is saying, ask your board to approve it, then as things get worked out and we receive a mandated date by which we have to join, we can wait until kind of the last week to get the most up-to-date agreements. And then we would have, they would obviously be reviewed by our legal counsel, and then we would sign them. That is kind of the recommended course of action. Um, certainly not the cleanest or way we would like to see things go, but that's kind of where we find ourselves.
So it's mandated that eventually we'll do this.
So, yeah, the state code is that we.
The normal legal caveat.
Wow.
Yeah, they haven't set a date, but they will, and.
Okay, do we have to give up the plans we already have?
No, so what the the the.
That's good.
Yeah, so the nice thing is, like, we would, we have no intention to give up any of the ones, we would continue to have those. The one really unique caveat to this, and you probably saw it, if you saw it in the um, the write-up from the attorney, is that at some point, they haven't, also haven't set a date, but my assumption would be this summer. Anybody who's new to TRS, like when they get hired for the first time, kind of the default is that you're in it. How, and then you have, they have to opt out. The only thing I find interesting is, this is, you know, 403 and uh, 457s are optional things for employees. How, and then people can pick a wide range of percentage to contribute. How do you mandate someone to come in at what percentage? Like, so there's just a lot of really kind of unique challenges that we find frustrating.
Yeah, yeah, this is, okay, appreciate the information. So um, so if we have a, like a, can you hear me? Sorry, if we have somebody at the school district who wants to do whatever this is, is their money going to be managed by the TRS? Do I have that right?
It'll be in Voya's Voya's plan.
But Voya, Voya is the manager, right?
Yeah, Voya would be the manager.
Okay.
So their money would then go to Voya, and we would have to, one of the, if someone from D39 does it, then we, the one thing that would make it challenging is that instead of relying on TSA to make sure nobody goes over contribution limits and manage all that, we would then have to look at that individual and say, okay, how much have they sent to Voya, how much have they maybe sent to
Wow.
our other ones, which is one of the really big caveats that, um, you know, some districts can maybe pull that off, a lot of school districts. So, um, it's, it's just, there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of dynamics. So really where we're at is If the board is okay, we would bring back next. Meeting, the resolution, which really just gives Carrie and I authority to join this whenever they finally make its journey.
Which again, we have to join it, it seems at this point, so.
Yeah, yeah, I I do really worry about the the point you just brought up about. Multi, you know, having all these different plans and then I, you know, I sort of, I know, I know enough to know I don't know anything. About these rules about pensions, but I know they're complicated and there's all kinds of penalties if you get wrong. So I would encourage you to pursue as much advice as you could get. Um, because this sounds, it sounds like a. Uh, something that could go wrong, yeah, Lisa.
I mean, it's just, it does, it's everything John said, and also, if I sit there and think I'm an employee. And I already had twenty things to decide from and now I have like a whole another range. I mean, it's one thing we would consider closing down our twenty. Like, is there a cost to the district and so then we'd be incurring double costs?
Corey?
The only, the only cost that districts really see is. Having like TSA manage that. But. TSA has. Huge number of school districts and even the ones that don't use them, they probably use somebody else. Just because there's so many legal updates and making sure that. Whoever is um offering four oh three B to your employees. Is continually staying up to date, that's definitely beyond like our our capabilities. I think that you would probably see some pushback if we tried to get rid of ours, I think the one nice thing is that. You know, that's purely an optional offering by D thirty nine. But the nice thing is we offer so many, there are other districts that I've seen where, yeah, they might offer a four oh three B. Maybe they only offer that only, or they offer one or two within that, so. Um, I I think it's a nice, nice perk to have that many different offerings.
That just from personal experience, uh, two or three times they switch management companies of my uh. Four one K and it's painful. So, I mean, if it saves us a lot of money, that's one thing, which it doesn't sound like it does, but from an employee standpoint. You end up with orphan accounts, you end up with, you really like this one and they don't have a similar, it it's painful. So I I'm. The only legal issue was, and it sounds like you're working with the lawyers, so. To make sure that with all these multiple accounts, people don't go over the maximum legal. And other than that, I don't, I don't have any problem with saying, I'm glad you're doing this.
Alright, and then the last thing that was included uh to all board members, and this is just a request from a prior month. And it also kind of fits nicely with nicely with previous discussions is. I I uh had a document. Where for, I think it's about fifteen years worth, the actual rate of return for TRS investments. Um, net of fees, and then. As I was going through their financial statements to find all this. You know, they had hundreds of pages of things to look at, I found the, or I noticed that they like to prominently s- display. The funded ratio of their assets to liabilities. Um, and the reason I included that is, I think it was kind of noteworthy that. The ratio, their funded ratio dropped. Uh, mirrored the the recession, housing crash and recession back in the late two thousands. The current assumed rate of return is seven percent. Um, they've done that for about five or six years now and before that it was seven and a half percent, so. It's more of an informational thing than than anything.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, I that is, I think, the end of the. My part.
Thank you very much, I will turn it over to Mrs. Schneider Fabe's first strategy.
Alright, we're in home stretch. Uh, Dr. Krimis Scolia, I'm assuming you're gonna give us a COVID update.
We're gonna give you just a quick situational update, um, originally, we had anticipated in January that we may be talking about some. Adjustments to our mitigation strategies based on um so many people having the option to access vaccines. And uh we know many throughout our community are doing so. Um, at this point, uh, based on the surge, we are not looking at adjusting our mitigation strategies in our schools. Uh, we are continuing with um the best practices that we have had in place. In accordance with the recommendations of the Cook County Department of Public Health and IDPH. Um, so we know these help to reduce risk of exposure and spread within our schools, we're grateful to continue in-person instruction. With these mitigation measures in place. Um, so at this point, we're continuing with those, obviously consistent masking across all school environments continues to be. Um, the standard and the requirement, distancing within our classrooms and across all school environments continues to be. Um, standard practice as well, I will note, um, at lunch. We have had our elementary students distanced at six feet for some time now since before Thanksgiving. We did make some adjustments coming into January at um Highcrest Middle School and WJHS to ensure that those students are also six feet. Apart during the unmasked times at lunch, um, that uh took some coordinating and some creative thinking. But we were able to accomplish that and it really does help with reducing. Potential risks of exposure, of quarantine. Um, and now as the IDPH continues to make some adjustments. It allows us to keep kids in school to the greatest extent possible, so. Uh, we're thankful for the creativity within Highcrest and and WJHS to make that possible. Um, we continue with outdoor recess as much as possible, obviously with the cold weather, that is less possible as is outdoor lunch. It's simply too cold to eat lunch outdoors, um, when the temperatures are as low as they have been. Um, but the key point here I I want to make and and really highlight is we continue to adhere to what the IDPH. And the Cook County Department of Public Health tells us to do in terms of quarantine and isolation of positive cases, quarantines are for close contacts. Isolation are for um positive cases. And um the IDPH has made some changes recently, um, as many of us know, uh. New Year's Eve, they announced some changes to align with the CDC's recommendations for isolation and quarantine. Um, IDPH adopted those and notified everyone of that adoption and then quickly. Attempted to clarify that there were some exemptions for schools. And um there was some confusion throughout those first couple of days of January about. How that was going to be adopted and available to our students. On Friday afternoon, they adjusted again and clarified that the five-day isolation and quarantine length. Is available for students as well as for our staff within our schools and so we are working really hard to implement that. And make sure that that is well communicated, but I I want to really emphasize that these changes continue to happen to school districts. And uh unfortunately, it leads to a lot of. Behind the scenes adjusting that our administrators in our nurses and our human resources department have to make, so we appreciate everyone's. Uh, patience as we try to adjust and then adjust again and again to the ever-changing guidelines. Again, the key point here is we will always implement whatever is the quarantine isolation period that is recommended to us. By the Cook County Department of Public Health, so when they adjust and they tell us a different date, we'll implement that that different date. Um, again. Continuing with in-person instruction has been um a lot of work, especially with the the surge right now and um with the. Changes in how we can isolate and quarantine cases, so I want to acknowledge and thank our principals, our human resources department. And all of our teachers and staff for their thoughtful. Extra effort and care to keep our schools open, it really does take the entire village to help with that, so uh thank you for that. Thank you. Um, a couple other notes I just wanted to make, we did make some adjustments to athletics and asked all of our athletes to be tested. Um, in order to continue to participate in practices, there was a pause on games in that first and at first week and in this week. Um, so we continue to monitor that with our conferences, we participate in two different conferences. Uh, but I I do want to thank and acknowledge our our coaches and our our athletes for jumping right in and participating as we ask them to do. Obviously distancing is difficult and not reliable when you're participating in competitive athletics. And so um our athletes have been testing weekly, as has the Nutri-R athletes and and that seems to be helpful. Um, and and offer some additional layers of protection there. Um, shield testing, we continue to operate Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays, thank you, thank you to Tony who has. Uh, done the incredible heavy lift of keeping that organized despite the lack of staffing that has come from shield. Um, we typically have four to five people show up and last week we had one person from the shield organization show up on Tuesday, which was. Our heaviest testing day, only two people on Thursday and on Saturday again, and so Tony has arranged for. Additional District Thirty Nine staff to be present, our administrators jumped in and lent a hand. We tested in our first week back, twelve hundred people, students and staff. Uh, incredibly, our results come back in about twenty-four hours, we were able to successfully isolate fifty cases as a result of that testing. Just in that first week alone, and we even were able to offer testing over winter break, tested about six hundred and fifty people and isolated about twenty-nine cases. At that time as well, so shield is proving to be an incredibly valuable resource. But also, again, another heavy lift for a school district to take on, um, because shield does not have the staffing that they originally anticipated having. So it's taking quite a bit of organization, we're also offering testing through township partnerships, so over the weekend. And throughout this week, there's some testing available at Marie Murphy and at Glencoe Central School. And that testing is actually available not only to students and staff throughout the township, but also to household members. Because it's not through shield, it's through a different testing agency, so people can access testing there um if they need it. In terms of vaccines and boosters at this point, the health department continues to advise those who are eligible to access their booster shot. So we continue to emphasize that as well on behalf of the health departments. Um, we are offering in partnership with Nutri-R a booster clinic on the twelfth and we've communicated that. Um, and we continue to ask our families to update their vaccine status information for students, again, it helps us with planning. But also makes slightly more efficient the contact tracing that we have to do, which at this point is taking a lot of time. From our administrators and our nurses, so as much information as we can have ahead of time is just simply really, really helpful to us. Um, and I'll also mention on that note that we have made some adjustments in our um whole school communication of cases. Uh, over this past week, we saw each school have at least a case to report each day and um so. We continue to notify any close contacts, we continue to directly notify the homeroom class where that case was present. Um, but the whole school communications, um, those are available on our our metrics page but won't be going out in an email. We really want to make sure that people are paying attention to the emails that are sent, those close contacts and homeroom exposures. Are most important and so we really need to focus our energies and attention on those. Um, and at this point, while cases are surging, it is a, there's a significant impact and I think people um can. Assume that there are some cases that are happening throughout any environments, any public environment that you're in at this point, so. Um, our metrics page continues to be updated daily, you can see if you're interested in tracking those cases at each school or throughout the district. Um, the data are displayed in a couple of different ways on our metrics page. Um, let me see, let me look back at my notes and make sure there isn't anything else that I'm missing here. Um, as I mentioned, we had expected to be able to review some of our mitigation strategies in January, right now. We're not looking to make any revisions to that until at least February and the current surge starts to come down a little bit, so. Uh, we are staying the course and continuing to do the best that we can to uh limit exposure. Um, and any any uh transmission risks within our schools, thanks in large part to everyone doing their part. Stay home if you're experiencing symptoms and seek testing, no matter what the symptom is at this point. Um, it it testing is readily available for our students and staff and so we appreciate everybody doing that. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have about any of that.
I have a question about resources, um, do you need anything from the board in terms of? You know, more um substitute teachers or substitute administrators or anything along those lines?
We could use all the help we could get, but right now substitutes are really, really hard to find, so. Yeah, unfortunately, um, well, I, let me start with the fortunate news, we continue to hire substitutes in our district and and Heather. And our administrators continue to interview, so if anyone is interested in subbing within our district, it really does help our schools remain. Operational to have substitute teachers, substitute nurses, substitute secretaries, um, substitute administrators, all of those. Individuals are really, really um helpful to us, um, throughout the state of Illinois and in in particular in the suburbs right now. Substitutes in all of those fields are really, really hard to find, there's just a limited pool of people who are. Properly uh certified and willing to do that work right now for us, so um, thank you for the offer, we certainly will let you know. I appreciate the board has been so supportive of all of our needs to date and so we will let you know if we. Think of something else that we might need and be able to fill, because the needs exist, it's it's filling those needs that is incredibly challenging at this point, so.
Um, I just want, well, so first I would say I do also wonder if, and I don't know if we're able to offer volunteers for the testing. And now that we are seeing a need, if shield isn't able to provide people. Um, I know I go regularly, I'd be ha, I mean, I know there are lots of people that would be happy to volunteer, I'm not sure if that's appropriate. Or not, but just to keep that in mind, um, and I just want to express the board's profound appreciation. For what you've been doing to keep us open. It's, you know, you all, we all were expecting perhaps a move in the other direction with changes to mitigation. And instead you're digging deeper than ever to. It's just psychologically, I think that's so challenging to be going in the other direction to keep us open and it's remarkable what you've been able to achieve. I know from my kid's own experience what it means, sixth grade teachers are teaching fifth grade classes and everybody's participating to. Keep us staffed and um we're just incredibly appreciative.
I just want to second that.
Yeah.
It was really well said, but it just not escape. Our consciousness, like how everybody's going above and down, I'm incredibly proud to be connected to this.
As am I, and we truly have some pretty incredible teachers and staff and administrators working. Um, really long hours right now, so what we ask is for grace and understanding when it takes. More than our typical eight hours to get back to someone by phone call or email. Um, understanding of our nurses and how busy they are right now as they're processing and reprocessing all of these dates and requirements. A a little bit of grace as we as we try to get back to everyone and answer questions and provide the support that's needed to keep our schools open, so thank you. Any other questions, otherwise I'll turn it back to Lisa for the next item.
Were you gonna do the DSAT or did that kind of get covered?
No, that did not get covered, um, that's a separate item, so um. My understanding is that Frank had some questions, he's been meeting with his subcommittee regarding um the KPIs for DSAT. And uh wanted to offer some updates on discussion as well as seek some feedback regarding student homework, so. I'll let Frank lead that discussion.
Um, yes, I'm uh privileged to be on the DSAT. Um, in particular, subcommittee goal one. Um, we had a lot of of potential ideas, uh, we discussed half of them and this week we'll. If we're having a subcommittee meeting to discuss the other half, in in that second grouping, there is one. Um, idea related to homework time. You know, some monitoring, I mean, again, it hasn't been discussed, but it is related to. Some monitoring of expected or or recommended um homework time. Um, and I wanted to be able to represent the board. Historically, the board has had guidance on with the administration on. Amount of our uh minutes per grade per day. Um, I know going back farther than when my son started in kindergarten, that was uh. It was discussed occasionally at the board level, but it was kind of the background guidance. And it hasn't been discussed in a while, there's a KPI potential idea, so I wanted to make sure that the board had a chance to. Give me feedback so that I could represent the the board correctly when we have that next round of. round of, of discussions on the KPI.
So I appreciate that. I think that's so helpful, and it's such an important conversation. I just am cautious about our role as a board. To me, that feels like an internal decision in terms of the specifics. I love the idea as a board of saying, we'd love to have a homework policy, and maybe we have some high-level parameters that it's, I don't know what those would be, developmentally appropriate, consistent, but personally, I feel like it's not our role to dictate what the policy is. To me, I see that as being more internal, but I don't know what, how other members feel.
We have guidance, we have a policy on homework.
I don't know that we have a policy. My understanding is the rule of thumb that's often implemented is 10 minutes per grade level is, is generally thought of by teachers and educators as, as kind of that best practice, not more than that. There are others who believe homework should only be done if we're practicing the skills taught and learned in school, and so sometimes it's even less than that. I don't know that the board has a specific policy unless I'm overlooking.
That's why I wanted to bring it up. Again, it's not a policy, because I was thinking through the words that policy means, and I couldn't think of how, but I know it was brought up, you know, every other year or so, or in passing from past boards, that 10 minutes per grade per day. And, and the guidance was, and I guess guidance is probably as good a word as any, was the, the trade-off of, when you get to Nutri-R, it's 45 minutes per core class, and runs out to about three hours a night, starting freshman year. So to have some kind of lead into that seems appropriate. And then the flip side was, did that burden students with, you know, unnecessary homework just for the sake of getting some specific target? So there was that, that kind of trade-off. It was kind of a guidance, the attempt from the, the school board. I know personally, it's the number one thing that parents talk to me about, that, you know, how come Johnny didn't have any homework this year, or Sally did last year, but this year doesn't have as much, or vice versa, especially if you have multiple kids. I mean, so it's very visible from a parent's standpoint. And it seems to fall into at least gross level differentiation, and, you know, since we're talking KPI, I wanted to, you know, I'm on the committee, it's always, you know, do I represent the board, or am I an individual member on the committee? I think it's a little bit of both, but I just wanted to make sure that we had a chance to, to bring it up and get.
I will share, sorry, can I just interrupt really quick then? We do have a philosophical, the board does have a philosophical. There we go. Policy, it doesn't set guidelines. It is, it is philosophical in nature, but there you go. In case anyone wants to read.
Frank, I'm a little confused. What exactly are you looking from the board? What do you need from us?
Just, you know, I was thinking back, and it's like, there's a philosophy, but we haven't mentioned it for longer than many, than, than many people that are on the board. So I just wanted to have a chance to support, to talk about the philosophy. I mean, when we're talking about KPIs, I, I wouldn't have an idea of how we could put a KPI around this, but it seems like it's something, it's numerical, and so it at least leads itself to a KPI, it related differentiation, so it kind of leads itself to this category. Seems to fit a lot of things, but I didn't want to just kind of, you know, be involved in the subcommittee and, and the discussion without having some idea of what the board is thinking.
Yeah, I think you, you sort of stated my concern as well, which is, of the issues I get feedback on, this is number one. And it's, when I say this, I mean, oh, there's not enough. Usually, it's not enough, is what I hear complaints about. So if I were to suggest, my personal input would be, if you have a KPI around it, then the KPI would be tailored to, to actually meeting the, whatever the goal is. So if it is 10 minutes, then, you know, per grade level, then it actually is 10 minutes per grade level. So I know it's, you know what I'm saying, as far as what a KPI would be?
Yeah.
So they, they set the target.
There's two parts, right?
Yeah.
Should there be, recommended that there's a KPI, and then what would the KPI be?
Right.
And, you know, there's, there's discussion that hasn't happened yet on both of those. But, you know, if you said that this is something that would be good to measure, measurements could be anything, right? I mean, it could be surveys, it could be whatever the committee and administration decides, but whether there should even be a KPI related to this topic is, is also a topic.
To me, that would be the committee. I, I feel like, I don't want to usurp that process, that we, you know, that, to me, that conversation would happen within the DSAT, and then we can offer, you are thinking about the particular.
And that's what I wanted to collect today. I mean, anecdotally, you said that, I'm, anecdotally, it's been one of the biggest things that the community has asked me. I know, I don't want to speak for, for Ann, but she's not here directly, but she has also said that she's heard a lot of people asking her that question. So it seems to be in the ether, and I just wanted to make sure, while I'm on the committee, that, that I hold the people on the board for their thoughts.
My thoughts are that I second Amy's concern about it not necessarily being our purview, and I think there are a lot more goes into homework and the decisions teachers make than just what the guidance is. And what could take my daughter 10 minutes could take Amy's daughter 20. It's like, I, I just think there's lots of variables that feel to be there. But Amy, go ahead.
I, I completely agree. I mean, personally, I love the idea of having the conversation. I have lots of personal thoughts about it, and I do hear about it from parents. So as a board member, I totally agree. It is, if I had one thing to say, I, as a board member, I would hope that we could figure out a way to be more consistent and developmental, so that kids' experience is at least a bit more similar, not that, in, not in terms of the number of minutes, because I think what you said is exactly right. But is there homework at a certain grade level? That should be consistent. How much time it takes is hard to quantify. But I just want to make sure we're really careful about our lane as a board. The high level, I think it's a great conversation if it grows out of the committee.
I, I agree. I'm okay with what this says here about that we direct the superintendent and his or her designees to develop the guidelines. Us giving any sort of quantity guideline, I have a major problem with, and I think is a major overreach on our part, and that's what I would tell any parent who asks me about homework. This is not a board level decision.
I think there's two parts. One part is, is this an area that, one, is worth discussing, and two, may be important to discuss in terms of potential KPIs? And then the second is, what would be an appropriate KPI? And that could be, in the Five Year Strategic Plan, anything from, you know, take surveys to, to monitor to see how we're doing. I mean, I, I'm not going to represent that part of it, but I, I think of it as the two parts, not putting a timeline or a specific minutes, or that is an educational thing, but saying this is an important area that we should look at is the first part of that, and that's what I wanted to try and get a feel for, because we do represent the public. And it, at the very least, there's a PR issue that, that parents don't understand why, you know, one, you know, fourth grade, Deli had, you know, half an hour of homework, and fifth grade, 10 minutes, and, you know, sixth grade, two hours, which we would then say is bad. But whatever, whatever. I mean, I, I think it's an issue that the, the community cares about, so it's something that we should think about how to represent it, the philosophy.
I, I guess I would just also say, it, we just did the strategic planning process where parents' concerns bubbled up, and so if that was in there, then I think, you know, we address it, or if it comes through the DSAT, through the goals that have been established, then I think, you know, that's an appropriate place.
I also think if parents come to you with concerns, you could tell them to address it with the children's teachers or administration.
So, sorry. I was just going to add my own perspective as an educator and having gone through the strategic planning process and as a parent, so I'll add all of those in. I, I think that sometimes we hear from parents about homework time, and really what their biggest concern is executive functioning skills. Is my child well-prepared to manage their own time and responsibilities to complete whatever work is necessary? Sometimes, parents interpret that to mean a certain amount of time should be given in homework, because we as parents feel like that means they're preparing themselves to be self-responsible and monitor their own work. So if, if we're to think about that skill, the actual root of the skill is about self-monitoring my own work and getting my work done in time to meet whatever deadline is put forward to me, sometimes homework is a good practice for that. But setting some timelines on, or limits, or measuring how much time kids are spending on homework, I think, might be the tail wagging the dog a little bit, in my own opinion. That said, it's really important that we measure and monitor and support our kids to have the executive functioning skills to do that successfully, because ultimately, what Frank might take your son 45 minutes per class in high school to be successful might take my son an hour and a half, or it might take my son 10 minutes, because they have different responsibilities and approach tasks a little bit differently. The key is, can they monitor themselves to get their work done by the deadlines that are presented to them, just as we as working adults need to do? And we all kind of manage that a little bit differently. So I, I just wonder if this is more about homework in and of itself, or is it more about our ability to monitor and support kids to have the executive functioning skills to get done, whatever it is that they need to get done, whether it's at home or at school or otherwise? So I, I don't know if there, I am personally not in favor of a time limitation beyond the, the deadline of, we shouldn't be doing more than 10 minutes per day per grade level. That, beyond that, where school is taking over some other aspects of life that are really important as well.
And, and that's exactly why I wanted to bring it up, that having some measurement on executive function skills, this may, may or may not be the right thing. That's why I was trying to break it into two pieces. And, and I, and I got feedback on that, and I'm sure there's some people in the background that are listening a little bit too. So, so I, I think that was a big point of why I wanted to bring it up. The only tiny caveat I'd put on that is, the Nutri-R philosophy of Level 2, 3, 4 is partly so that each, each child at each level is, is challenged at the same amount, that, you know, if you have, if you're placed in Level 2, your challenge is, so their 45-minute thing as a guidance or a philosophy was independent of starting skill level, because theoretically, that's normalized by what level class they're in. And historically, one of the many surveys that we used to have that have unfortunately disappeared over time, they used to have a survey of freshmen in Nutri-R on how well they felt they were prepared by their grade school, and we always did really well, except on two items. One was, like, 60% of the kids said that the homework was significantly more than they were used to, again, it's self-reported by the students, but it was an area that popped up all the time. And then the other was writing skills, that's a totally different topic. But so it was a topic that students felt, and executive skills is a better way of saying it, and that's why you're the superintendent on that. But, but it is an area that's important to students, it's an area that's important to parents, so I wanted to bring it up.
I think in the name of time, I would say, you know, if there's anything else we can provide now, great. Otherwise, you know, as that, I, I feel like we shouldn't be putting topics there. It, it, as the conversation continues this month, let us know if there's more feedback you need.
I'm, I'm better educated to be able to practice the page in the subcommittee better, and that's.
Perfect.
What I wanted to make sure I brought up. So thank you.
Thank you. Good. Ready to head back? Okay, so I am bringing us to public comments, which will be available in person or remotely via Zoom. Do not see anybody here in person, and we do not have anybody on Zoom, so I will move to old business, which we will start with discussion on the third read for our board policies. Oh, no, 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 that's, that's an old script.
We have an update regarding, yeah, the January 13th special meeting of the board. We'll be posting that later today or tomorrow, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act requirement for posting a special meeting. This has been planned for a while, and it is the Atlantic Research Partners' presentation of their, of their report to the board. They're meeting with our staff on the 12th, but they'll be meeting remotely with our staff. The representatives from Atlantic Research Partners come from across the country, and were able to complete their school-based visits and interviews prior to this latest surge. But at this point, when they meet with staff on the 12th, they'll be meeting remotely. So they won't be here in town, and we've made the decision, just based on everything being inflexed so much, that they will meet with the board on the 13th remotely as well, meaning they won't be here physically in person. So it is up to the board, if you wish to come here in person, just knowing that they will be presenting to us remotely, in much the same way the village representatives presented to you remotely today. You can come in person, and we will post the meeting accordingly, and they will simply be presenting remotely. We could also post the meeting as a remotely held meeting. Either way, the meeting will be live-streamed and recorded. It really is up to the board how they wish to proceed with the meeting, and then we'll post it accordingly.
How long do we expect it?
We expect it not to be more than two hours. It may be substantially less than that. I, I think it's probably one to two hours. I, I would be surprised if it's less than an hour, but we won't, won't meet longer than two.
I'm in favor of being remote, but open to being in person. That's my personal, I don't know what other people think.
I should add, the other caveat is, we either hold a remote meeting or we hold an in-person meeting. If we're in person, we can't have a board member participate remotely.
All or nothing.
That's my understanding of the guidance as it stands right now. Yes. So like, right now, we have six of our seven board members present, which is fantastic, and, and.
Like an eternity between now and Thursday.
That's right. That's true. So, but we do have to post it.
Right. I'm in favor of Ramon.
Ramon?
I'll go with the majority.
Either way, it's fine.
Does the administration have a preference?
I don't think that we do have a preference. Either way, we will be here and participating, so I don't think it makes a difference to us.
You do, it sounds like remote?
Remote would allow the greatest flexibility and everyone to participate, whether they are needing to be at home or not, quarantined or not, so. Okay, so I, I am going to triple-check the Open Meetings Act as of this afternoon, and make sure that we can move forward with that meeting held remotely. If so, we will, we will post that meeting tomorrow morning and be ready to go on Thursday evening as a remote meeting. Unless, 7:00 PM? 7:00 PM.
There's, there's nothing we have to vote on.
No, it's just a discussion. No, it's just a discussion. Yep, it's just a discussion. There's no vote. Okay, thank you for that feedback and guidance. I appreciate that.
Terrific. Board members, is there any new business? Is this resolution something that we should be talking about?
We were talking about that earlier, and it will come back for a vote at a, at a regular board meeting.
Okay, having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
I move to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, I think we need to call roll since everybody's not here. Will the clerk please call the roll? Sounds he's ready.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Tanzika?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabs? Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Phelan? Yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned, and the time is 10:48 AM.